It is 4:17 and I'm going to call the regular meeting of the school board to order.
Opening exercises tonight are Mr. Frink.
And that would be me, and thank you so much, and thank you all for being here. The opening exercises, each board members, we kind of rotate and we just, you know, depending on what's going on, we all take the opportunity to either, you know, bring forth the program the kids are doing or say comments or whatnot, but my comment, I had some comments and they're a little bit personal today, so I just want to reflect over the past year because today winds up my final full regular board meeting for the year, my first year here, so it's kind of my anniversary, so I guess you'd call it that.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you. So, and I was looking back, so last year at this time, you know, we were all in full, well, some of us were in full election mode, Dr. Hebert, you were not, Ms. Counts, you were not, you made it through early, but, so I wouldn't know if I would be sitting up here or out there, so I was fortunate enough that the electorate selected me to be sitting up here with you, but, so I just had some observations over the past year and really for the audience and anybody listening, our kids are in really good hands. I just, I could not be more pleased to see, now that I'm kind of on the inside watching what's going on, the youth of this county are in very good hands. The community is very fortunate, and so I've been to a lot of meetings around the state and met other school boards. You are so fortunate, and trust me, if you saw what I saw, you'd understand to have a cohesive, balanced, engaged and diverse board. There's so many places I've been, the topic of conversation is how in the heck, how in the heck do I get along with my fellow board member, because we just can't get along? And then just add an elected superintendent to that, even gets worse. I mean, there's so many boards that are just at odds with each other, so this community is so fortunate to have this board, this superintendent and this staff that are just all pulling the rope in the same direction. So I just, I thank you guys for that, and thank you for bearing with me for, as your freshman board member for the year, I've got a lot to go, but I'm still the new kid in town, I look forward to growing in this role and providing back to this community. So, that was my, that was my opening exercise.
Well, thank you very much.
If you would all stand, we'll do the pledge, the pledge and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you'd all join me for a moment of silence. Thank you all. Ms. Counts, it's your meeting now.
Okay, before we call to adopt the agenda, I have three items that have been added to the agenda for good cause. They're number nine, safety and security from Chief Montgomery.
How in the heck do I get along with my fellow board member? Because we just can't get along. And then just add an elected superintendent to that, it even gets worse. I mean, there's so many boards that are just at odds with each other. So this community is so fortunate to have this board, this superintendent, and this staff that are just all pulling the rope in the same direction. So I just, I thank you guys for that. And thank you for bearing with me for, as your freshman board member for the year. I've got a lot to go, but I'm still the new kid in town. I look forward to growing in this role and providing back to this community. So that was my, that was my opening exercise.
Well, thank you very much.
If you would all stand, we'll do the pledge, the pledge and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you'd all join me for a moment of silence. Thank you all. Ms. Counts, it's your meeting now.
Okay, before we call to adopt the agenda, I have three items that have been added to the agenda for good cause. They're number nine, safety and security from Chief Montgomery. Number 13, educational services, assessment, accountability, and monitoring, and the school calendar. And 15, school operations, educational technology calendar, adopting an amendment. So now I can entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion, we accept the agenda as recommended by superintendent, superintendent with those changes as added for good cause, those three items.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Frink to adopt the agenda as amended by the superintendent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. The first citizens' comments are received on, for comments on items requesting approval on the agenda and the consent agenda. Other opportunities are available on any subject at 5:15 or immediately after the close of the public hearing, which starts at 5:00, or at the end of the business. Are there any citizens' comments speaking to the agenda items? Any citizens' comments speaking to agenda items? Last call. All right, hearing none. Entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval, second.
Was that Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, it was.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Ferretti, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then Ms. Greco's going to do one of our favorite parts of every school board meeting, and she is going to recognize our wonderful community and the donations that they make to our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Counts. All right, we're going to start with approval of the $5,000 donation to Hernando Elementary School from VFW Post 4252. Approve $500 donation to Inverness Primary School from J. Holonick Enterprises. Approve the $900 donation of Crystal River Primary School from Sea Design Boat Works. Approve the $500 donation of Crystal River Middle School from Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Approve the $500 donation of Crystal River Middle School from Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Approve the $500 donation of Crystal River Middle School from Waste Bros. Environmental and Sewage LLC. Approve the $999 donation to Inverness Middle School from Kiwanis Club of Inverness. Approve the $2,500 donation to La Canto Middle School from the Dickert Family. Approve the donation of a Kubota tractor valued at $22,499 to Crystal River High School from Crystal Tractor and Equipment. That's fun, I know, it's fun. Approve the $500 donation to With La Cucchi Technical College from Ladies Auxiliary of Abbott Francis Sandler Knights of Columbus 6168 Ladies Auxiliary. Approve the $1,500 donation to With La Cucchi Technical College from the Marty Wilson Memorial Scholarship Fund, Inc. Approve the $2,500 donation to With La Cucchi Technical College from Scholarship America. Approve the donation of four units Ford Police Interceptor SUVs valued at $26,000 to With La Cucchi Technical College from the Hernando County Sheriff's Office. Approve the $1,000 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Chris River Eagles. And approve another $1,000 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from the Chris River Eagles. So in total tonight, we have donations of $66,398.
And we are so thankful that our community loves our kids. Next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's message.
Thank you, Ms. Counts, and thank you all for being here today. So first, I'd like to start with, in my message, to clear up some confusion related to the declaration of impasse with the teacher's salary improvement allocation, which is called the TSIA. It was announced last Tuesday, and I just wanted to make sure that the public and the board and everybody understands kind of what happened, because I'm hearing some things on social media that may not be accurate as far as what impasse that means. So Florida statute requires that the teacher salary improvement allocation, growth allocation, be used for increased personnel compensation or salary increases for full-time classroom teachers with at least two years of full-time teaching experience in Florida public schools. By October 1st, 2025, each school district had to submit a board-approved plan for the distribution of these funds, or a statement explaining what steps have been taken, and an anticipated date for completion. We submitted a statement since we did not have a board-approved plan. The intent of that statute was to put those dollars in the hands of the qualifying teachers as soon as possible. Immediately after the school board meeting on Tuesday, October 7th, Mr. Baumer contacted CCEA chief negotiator that impasse was declared on the TSI growth allocation only. Let me restate that. The impasse was declared on the TSI growth allocation only, just that funds, that we want to continue negotiating with CCEA. The CCEA negotiator was also informed via email the formal impasse declaration as per Florida statute. The following day, Mr. Baumer and Mr. Bonomo received an email from CCEA requesting to meet via Zoom on Thursday, October 9th. On Thursday, Mr. Baumer and Mr. Bonomo met with CCEA over Zoom and discussed the impasse of the TSI growth allocation only. So again, the conversation was on the TSI growth allocation only. That's the funds generated by the state that they gave for that specific purpose. During that meeting, it was decided that both parties will meet this Thursday, 10:16, for an all-day session. They will still have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, October 20th. Citrus County School Board has never left the bargaining table. Let me state that again. This school district, this school board, has never left the bargaining table. As stated in our letter to CCEA on the day of the declared impasse of the growth allocation only, 10:06, and the letter sent to CCEA last Thursday, 10:08, our bargaining team remains prepared to return to the table to continue to work towards a resolution towards all economic and language proposals. So I want everybody to be clear, the impasse was only on one item, not on everything else. We are still going to the table, and our team is still working towards that. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that the statute also said that we needed to give the teachers the money by October 1st?
Yes, that was at the beginning of my statement, that it had to be done, yes. So next, I'd like to share something that we started, and kind of, it's called the Citrus Six. And kind of how this came about and what that is, and I've had Ms. Lindeman here who's kind of taken the lead on presenting that and doing that work. So during my listening tour, one of the things that I heard from many, many staff that work our front desk, many staff that work in the support staff world have said, I would like some training and support in this work that I do, because they sit at the front desk, they're answering the phones, taking messages, they're doing a lot of this work, interacting with families, and they said, I get hired and there's not really a lot of training on what to do. So our team met, we talked about what could this look like and what might it be, and we talked about this customer service initiative of what we could provide, and we titled it as we came up with kind of crafting what this was, the Citrus Six. Ms. Lindeman reached out to many of our support staff that work in that world, and they gathered and gave information to Ms. Lindeman of what this might look like, and we then developed the training, and we conducted a training over the summer and asked schools to roll that training out this year. Knowing that there's a lot of things happening at the beginning of the year, we allowed schools some autonomy to do that. So Ms. Lindeman's here, Ms. Lindeman, do you mind kind of sharing, once you started that training, kind of what you heard from staff during that initial part? Push the button.
Thank you. So this actually started in my previous role as Director of Professional Learning. We have what we call a Support Staff Development Council, and our Support Staff Development Council is made up of members of support staff from all of our schools and district sites. And we ask them at every meeting for feedback on what they need more of, what they would like to see less of, especially as it pertains to professional learning. So something that they asked for, and they've asked for repeatedly, was customer service, de-escalation strategies. And so we started brainstorming, and if you would like to go online and start looking up some customer service trainings, they're not really all that exciting, they're very just kind of boring and rote-type information. So we wanted to make it special for Citrus County schools, because our staff is special in Citrus County schools, and so we wanted to develop something that would stick and something that we can be really proud of. So we came up with the Citrus Six, and I'm going to make sure I don't mess this up, but the C stands for Commit to Excellence, the I is Inspire Positive Experiences, the T is Timely and Efficient Communication, the R is Respect for Every Stakeholder, the U is Unique Solutions, which, as you all know, we're coming up with every day. And then the last one is very simple, just to smile and be kind. So we came up with that, and the training was more than just customer service. We got into opportunities for de-escalation strategies, we worked with different departments, our ESE department, our leadership team, and we, we came up with 10 de-escalation strategies that our staff could use. We also had embedded throughout the entire presentation opportunities for them to collaborate, talk with one another, and apply the skills. So I, I've had an opportunity, we, when we did the training in the summer, we had every site and school represented. We asked them to send support leaders from their campuses, as well as an administrator or a teacher leader from their school, who would then become the trainers for their campus. We provided them with all of the resources, the presentation, all of the handouts, but we told them also, make it your own. Your school culture is unique, and so actually, our presentation starts out with just an overview of climate and culture. And so we've started to hear back from several schools. I had the opportunity of attending the WTC training, and it was wonderful. They actually took what we had as some scenarios to kind of talk through, they turned them into role play. And they made them relevant to situations on their campus, and they were hilarious and fun, and everyone was laughing. But it was really great reminders about the fact that we are in the customer service business. And so when we ask in our presentation, one question we pose of the participants is, when you think about great customer service, what comes to mind? And they begin to throw out big corporate names. We want them to, people in, in our district to throw out Citrus County schools, because we know we have the absolute best teachers and support staff in our district. And this is just a great opportunity to collaborate together and really to just keep the focus of the Citrus Six, even in those really trying times.
Thank you, Ms. Lindeman, thank you for that. The other piece this past week that we wanted to also share and celebrate was it was School Lunch Week. And so Ms. Greco and I had a chance to go over to Inverness Middle School, and as you can see the picture, they turned the entire lunchroom where the serving line is into like an airport. And they had a baggage claim area, they had a place where you checked in your tickets, you can see walking through, thank you for flying Charger Airlines. And we just wanted to recognize the great work that our food service team does to make, come into the lunchroom and come into the cafeteria, a fun and exciting place. So we thank them for that and for the decorations that they put in, the time they put in to make that happen. So thank you for that.
And we got our wings, too.
Yes, we did. Wings to fly. No, not chicken wings. Wings that you wear. Next, yesterday, I'm so excited that we're able to do our ribbon cutting at Floral City Elementary, and I ask if you had a chance, have not had a chance to visit, make an appointment with Ms. Kaler, the principal, and take a look at the, the new place. So we were excited, we had over 50 people that were able to attend the event, many community leaders, elected officials, you know, local folks that were there, we had former staff that were there, principals that were able to come, and you can see Bubba, the, the bullfrog was there as well, so that was a big excitement. And we cut the ribbon to open the new building. So it was a great day, I don't know if any of the board members want to comment, because I know some of you were able to make it. Any comments or?
Mr. Dodd, you're not going to comment on Floral City?
Well, I will certainly comment. It was a great day, Floral City Elementary's in my district, and you know, that's been a long time coming, but we, we worked on it and we got it accomplished. And so it's a great new, new school, it's a new building, 12-classroom building that we added on, we got rid of the portables that were there, redid the kitchen, expanded the cafeteria, and we also provided for a new front office entrance that was based a lot on security, but it also maintained the integrity of the historical building there. So we have a different entrance into the school that goes actually in through one of the side, side wings where a classroom was, but great job by Mr. Stokes and your staff, Dr. Hebert, on getting that done and coming in on time and really under budget. I mean, when you look at the amount of money that was spent, you know, I think it was around 10.2 million for all of those projects, and to have a nice new classroom wing with 12 classrooms in it, with each classroom having its own bathroom, and so, you know, and the teacher office and storage room, just technology that's there is just, was a great thing for Floral City and for that community. What a great school it is, Floral City and Home Assassin Elementary, two of our community's schools, smaller schools, that we very much value. So it was a great day, and I'm glad we were able to put on that, that ribbon cutting.
And, and thank you, Dr. Hebert. Eric Stokes, we cannot say enough about all of his team, all of their efforts. Also, you know, the contractor, Scorpio, and, and them putting that together and making that happen. Also, you know, Sheriff Vincent, who was then Chief Vincent, had a footprint in making sure that there were safety measures that were taken into consideration, and those were incorporated. Mr. Dodd mentioned, you know, lessons learned. We have learned a lot over the years when we have had to do expansions and developments. That's why we have the restrooms there in those classrooms. This is a multi-year project, it's been, you know, over a decade in having to phase this in in such a way that was efficient to taxpayers as well as to meet the needs of our future schools. So thank you, Dr. Hebert, for your leadership in it, and thank you for all those involved.
Well, it was a great day, and we're so excited, and I know I got the report where they list how many students we have, and I saw Floral City used to list at 420, now the seat capacity is 599. So it was a little bit like, whoa, I'm not used to seeing that large number there, but we'll be excited to move students into there as we do some rezoning in the future. So thank you so much.
What I liked about it is now we've changed the parent drop-off and pickup line, getting more parents off the roadway, because we have increased enrollment, because that, when I was the SRO there, it used to go all the way down to, to, oh, I forgot the name of the road, it's been gone so long. But it used to block up Marvin and Baker and, and, you know, onto Old Floral City Road, and it used to go right into there. So it's now getting a lot of the parents off of there, so.
Well, thank you all for your support in making that happen. So next, I'd like to highlight one of our staff that got to serve on a task force for artificial intelligence, and you can see up on the screen, it's the Florida K-12 Artificial Intelligence Education Task Force. And look at some of the folks that Ms., our own Ms. Androski, Director of Technology, was a part of. So I've asked Ms. Androski if she could just give us a brief snippet of that, and she is, by the way, because of that work she's doing, I've asked her to create a task force within our district to look at artificial intelligence and how we embed that into the work that we do each and every day.
Thank you, Dr. Hebert. Yes, I'm very excited for the opportunities we have had. My instructional staff at the Technology Resource Center, Mr. Kennedy and myself have been fortunate to participate on the task force with the University of Florida led by Dr. Maya Israel. And in addition, I was able to serve as a panelist with some of the other districts from across Florida. Most of them were larger than Citrus. We had actually Marion participated, and they're just to the north of us, and it was a wonderful opportunity to hear how other districts are navigating ethical and responsible use of AI in education. And learning from one another is important, and we look forward to continuing to do so as we navigate through this. Additionally, I'm quite pleased that Dr. Hebert has asked if we would meet with various stakeholders across the district, and we have on multiple occasions, to gather their input and help create a guideline for usage. We want to make sure that we tread carefully and that we're meeting the goals of our students and our staff in furthering education and preparing them for a world that we can't even imagine, right? Because who'd have thought, I don't know about you, but when I began in, in education, I never thought that we would be having this conversation. So we want to prepare them, but it's important that we hear from everybody involved and that we are always responsible in use. So I'm excited, and great news, we have four schools that have agreed to pilot with us and create a plan for implementation with their staff and students. Very exciting, so thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for congratulating on being on that panel, we're thankful for that. So next, I'd like to take a moment and share a story of partnership and one that represents the heart of this community. So I will share, when I was campaigning, one of the things that was important to me as superintendent is to make sure that community was a part of the work that we do every day, that we can't educate our kids without community. The work that we do each and every day, the 15,000 students we educate, we can't do it if we don't have partnership with, with families, we have partnership with businesses, and just local community members to be a part of what we do. And so today, working alongside Ms. Burdette, I'd like to highlight a group that has been an extreme and wonderful partner with, with our school district and with our kids. So the Kiwanis Club of Inverness and the Citrus County Education Foundation share a common purpose, serving our students and supporting their success in every way possible. And together, that shared mission has turned into something really special. So I'd like to invite up Shonda Burdette, the Executive Director of the Education Foundation, to speak and ask the Kiwanis Club members of Inverness to come to the front. So Ms. Burdette, would you speak first, and then we'll invite the, the team up?
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Hebert, for allowing me to talk on behalf of such an incredible partnership. Year after year, the Kiwanis of Inverness step up, not just with donations, but with hands-on help and hearts for service. They've supported our school supply drives, they've provided multiple pieces into our free teacher store, basic needs to supply our schools. They've helped fund student scholarships, volunteered their time at countless foundation events over the years, they're mentoring students, they're reading to students. When there's a need in our schools, they often are among the first to ask, how can we help? In fact, since 2023, Kiwanis of Inverness have given to the foundation alone over $37,000. What makes this partnership so meaningful is the consistency and care behind it. The Kiwanis members don't just talk about community, they show up for it, they are community. They're in our schools, they're encouraging students, and they're helping us remove barriers so that every child in Citrus County can reach their full potential. On behalf of the Citrus County Education Foundation, I want to express our deepest gratitude to the Kiwanis Club of Inverness for being true champions for education and for continuing to invest in the future of our students. Together, we are proving that when community and education come together, incredible things happen.
And one more fact, Ms. Burdette, I don't know if you knew, the Kiwanis Club of Inverness has invested $459,927 to the Citrus County School District through donations to schools, scholarships, educational initiatives, and programs. Let's give them a round of applause for that. Thank you. And, and with that, every so often, I have an award that I give out, and so I'd like to give that to the Kiwanis Club. It's called the Superintendent's Impact Award, presented to the Kiwanis Club of Inverness with heartfelt appreciation for your incredible generosity and support of Citrus County schools. As one of those impactful donors, you have made a lasting difference in the lives of children across our district, helping them learn, grow, and thrive. Your dedication to serving others reflects the true spirit of community and continues to inspire us all. Thank you so much. If you'd come up, we'd love to get a picture with all of you.
Chief Montgomery, if you can join us, she's a critical part of the Education Foundation in making things happen.
How you doing? Oh my God. It's been a real hard time.
president, well, I guess I should say I'm now the past president of Kiwanis Club. Travis Wells will be our incoming, but I just wanted to let the folks know that we just had a celebration last night at the Valerie Theater celebrating the Kiwanis of Inverness's 100th year. We're probably, I think we're the third or fourth oldest Kiwanis Club at the state of Florida. We will continue, hopefully, for the next 100 years. We're all about the kids and the youth of our county. Since we started our major fundraiser drive back in 2015 with our Sportsman's Night, we've contributed over 1.2 million to the few theaters in Citrus County, so we continue to do it not only with the school system, but any other needs that we, we see throughout the community. So we thank you for this recognition, and we're here to help anywhere we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burdette, and thank you, President-elect or past President Hensley, thank you. So next, I'm, I'd like to share a little bit about some veterans' events we have coming up, but before we do, I invite someone that's here to speak. Dr. Balk, would you share, pick one of the flags to share? We have some things for the semi-quinsentennial that have been made, and Dr. Balk worked on this, and we just wanted to share for all of our high schools, the colors, so they can see.
There's no specific order, you guys?
Yeah, yeah.
And Ken and I will not mind.
There's one more, there's one more comment.
The best for last.
Want to get a picture? Thank you. And so as you know, we're, we're getting more things happening, but these just came in, and I thought it'd be great to share with you all today. We're getting them out to the schools as soon as possible. But along with that, you know, the veterans here in Citrus County, as you know, we're a Purple Heart district, we're a Purple Star district, and so the work that we do with the veterans, many of the programs we have here at the veterans are very, very important to me, I know to you as a board, and I know to our staff. So we have Commander Richard Hunt, who is going to be here to speak about some additional information. Thank you, Commander, for being here.
Every time I have the opportunity and the privilege to see y'all, the first thing that comes to mind is a simple word, wow. I mean, really, truly, and there's, it's goosebumps. I'm a combat marine, I was a sergeant at 18 years old with, with the combat command. Y'all excite me. I mean, this, this county is absolutely amazing. And piggybacking on some of what the doctor was saying earlier about partnerships, the partnership with MOPH, Military Order of the Purple Heart, and this school district is just unbelievably amazing. The doctor is correct. This is the first school district in the nation to become a Purple Heart district. This is the first school district in the nation to become a Purple Heart district. The first. Dr. Al Balk has been working with the Purple Star program, getting recertified with the state. It's been a real pain, but many of those things are. And the information from this small county versus the really large ones, this county does exponentially more than anybody else I know of in the state of Florida. It's just a really wonderful place to be. The commitment from the board, the teachers, and the staff with our children is something to be extraordinarily proud of. One of the upcoming events is veterans in the classroom. This is something that's not totally unique to Citrus County, but again, I don't know of any place in the state that does anything like this, and especially to the degree it's done here. And there'll be a lot of serious things said here tonight, there already has been, I'm certain, but I'm going to share with you something that touches my heart. I have been involved personally with the veterans in the classroom for a number of years. I hope to have many more doing that, and I love the little kids. I've got teachers at Pleasant Grove Elementary that I've seen over and over and over, and then the little kids get to be big kids, and I've got adults that are coming back now saying, you know, I remember you. In the classrooms there, I had a little girl, and I let them ask me questions. And I always tell them what my granddaddy told me when I used to ask him. Granddad, can I ask you a question? He says, sure, but you're going to get an answer. It may not be the one you're looking for, but yes, you will get an answer. So little boy says, where'd y'all sleep? Well, the worst pastry was a rice patty with water and mud in it. What'd you eat? We went through that. This little girl says, yes, ma'am. Where'd you go to the bathroom? Followed by a ooh. That's the humorous side. I got knocked on my rear end by a little boy. Yes, sir? He says, why is there war? Why is there war? And we did have a little discussion about that. But there is so much good that happens here and the blend with the veteran community and everything that's involved with the educational process in the county. We also have, coming up at the old Homosassa Veterans Memorial on November the 1st, it's not Veterans Day, but we're going to do Veterans Day there because of road closures on Veterans Day. I encourage all to come. The ceremony will start at 10:00 a.m., and I have been informed by Derek Bitner that the young students from the elementary school are going to be performing there and singing the National Anthem. And it'll be something that, again, these are things that you have to experience, and we can here. And then, of course, there's a Veterans Day Parade. There'll be many from the school district that are involved in that. With the Purple Star, every single school in the district is a Purple Star school, and there's a liaison from everyone. And then that will accumulate for me or us in February, for our Purple Heart Ceremony on February the 21st. Every single school in the district will have a display at that ceremony. And the comments from the citizenry and the families and the students, it's amazing. There's a picture back there with the JROTC cadets. Those folks are absolutely amazing, and they get more and more involved. They are our future. Again, I am grateful to be here. There is no place like here. Thank you for the honor of being here and being involved with this wonderful county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander Hunt.
Okay. Is that the end of the message?
That's it.
That's it? Okay. Next on the agenda is safety and security. Chief Montgomery needs a couple motions.
Good afternoon. I'm here to request approval of the Quarterly Safety and Security School Visits Inspection Report. That's delivered by the Florida Department of Education.
Yeah, and Chief Montgomery, just go over that with us, because I know what was posted was basically all zeros, but there's obviously a reason for that, so.
Yes, sir. So with the new school year, we haven't had any inspections conducted by the Department of Education. They did visit our sites the first week of school to make sure that we had safe officers, but we complied, and they don't report that on that quarterly inspection, but we do intend to obviously receive them at any point. They should be coming probably in the next couple of months.
Right. So we are required to approve the report by law. There's no report there, but we're still going to approve it. So I'll make a motion to approve the Quarterly Safety and Security School Visits Inspection Report.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Farady, to approve the Quarterly Safety and Security School Visit Inspection Report to the state. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes.
Thank you. And then the second thing I'm here for is request approval of the 2025-2026 Best Practices Assessment. As we reviewed in the executive session with the recommendations that you all made, they will be submitted in the assessment as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-26 District Best Practices Assessment.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the 2025-2026 District Best Practices Assessment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much for keeping all of our kids safe. All right, next on the agenda is Human Resources, Mrs. Lau.
Good evening, everyone. I am asking for your approval of the recommendations on the Golden Rod for both support and instructional.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frink, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the instructional and support recommendations on the Golden Rod. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for all you do in keeping our classroom full of teachers and our buses full of drivers.
Thank you.
Finance?
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Okay. So I am here tonight, or this afternoon, to request approval of Budget Amendment Number One for September. Traditionally, we don't bring that amendment to you guys until the November meeting, but we identified some changes that needed to be made. Changes have been made to the general funds, special revenue, federal, because we received some additional grant awards, and to the capital outlay funds.
I make a motion that we approve the Budget Amendment Number One, September 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Frink, to approve the Budget Amendment Number One dated September of 2025. All those in favor?
And before you do, I just want to thank Ms. Cox. I was excited and got an early, you know, of having that amendment and having a chance to really review it and be able to call your office with any questions, and so appreciate just your promptness of getting all that to us. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Do you want to proceed with the rest of them?
We just need, we do need to call the vote. I apologize for interrupting.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now.
Okay. Okay, so the next few items are just for information. I have the August Cash and Investment Report. You might notice that the investment balances are slightly lower. It's just that time of year. We haven't started receiving any of the property tax dollars yet, and since that is a large portion of our funding, we'll see that rebound in a few months. Next, I have the August Financial Statements. That, I highlighted a few items there when I sent you guys that by email. I don't know if you have any questions on that, but again, it's trending kind of similar to where we were August last year. We haven't started seeing a lot of those revenues just yet, but we still have to pay the bills. So, and let's see here. Give me a second, I got my papers out of order. And the last thing is a budget update. At this time, I don't really have a whole lot to report. We did just approve that amendment for September. I am continuing to have budget meetings with the various departments just to see if there's any, anything else that, you know, since I'm still relatively new coming into this and trying to, you know, make sure that everybody has what they need to be able to serve the students. So, is there any questions on any of that?
I can't see the clock.
Yes, thank you so much and appreciate, you know, we're getting those out a little bit earlier and appreciate it gives us time to review those things, so we appreciate your work being done there. I did want to make a comment that we didn't get them posted to the website for the public meeting, so that it didn't get attached. I know you sent us the budget update and the financial statements, but when I went on the website to pull it up with the public hearing, the public meeting, it was not attached there, so I don't know if we can.
We'll make sure it's with the notes.
Yeah, okay.
With minutes.
We got it in the email, but I'm just saying that the public wouldn't be able to.
But it wasn't public ahead of the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know, just if you could make sure that they get that posted before the meeting.
Okay, I know we're working with a new, we're still working, you know, figuring out the diligent platform, so to get things added after, once the agenda's been approved, I'm not sure the process of that, but we'll.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a public hearing at 5:00, so I'm going to recess the school board meeting, and I'm going to call for the public hearing to approve amendments for the code of conduct. There are some, five of you can grab some chairs up front here, and there's a few in the third row.
All right. Dr. Hebert, Ms. Greco, board members, I just come before you today requesting approval of the amendment to the Student Code of Conduct for 2025-26.
Hearing any public input on the change in the amendment to the code of conduct? Dealing with, dealing with the new cell phone law? Any public comment dealing with the amendment to the Student Code of Conduct? Third and last call for comment on the change in amendment to the Code of Conduct, dealing with cell phones. All right. Hearing none? I have one comment, though. One thing I found too, beyond this, this new change in the language for the cell phone use, the link for the, on page 20, is still not in the, in the book. I think we were going to change it or look for something that was changed in the state level or something like that, just make sure that gets in there.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the 2025-26 Code of Student Conduct.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the amendment to the 2025-2026 Student Code of Conduct. Tracking changes 915.25.25 PDF and the Code of Conduct, 915.25 and 2526 Code of Conduct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Close the public hearing and reopen the board meeting. And Ms. Dory, your turn.
I know you were just so excited about calendars. So, good evening. I am here today to share the calendar options with the board and highlight some of the differences between the three calendar options, and ultimately ask for the board's approval to begin voting tomorrow, starting with our staff, and the voting will run through November 13th. With the three calendar options, before I go through the differences, I did want to share that when voting is happening, we will be asking staff to say what their second vote would be as well. That way, if we don't have that majority vote at the end, we'll be able to look at those numbers to make sure that we have a clear winner. Also, in our parent surveys that will be going out October 27th, our parents will have an opportunity to see this as well and look at the differences in the calendar, and they will vote. Their vote will not count as far as what we select for our calendar, but it does provide us very good feedback, so that when we meet as a committee next year, we're able to use that feedback when we're creating the calendar. So looking at our options for the three calendars, the one thing that I wanted to kind of share is that there are some things that are similar. So if you're looking at the start date for teachers, all three calendars do have a start date of August 3rd. If you look at the last day for teachers, all three calendars have the last day being Friday, May 28th, and for students, a last day of May 27th. So we do have those similarities across all three. There are some, when you're looking at that May 27th for the students, that it's an early dismissal versus a full day. Now, that's kind of where the similarities end as far as the three calendars. They did a really great job, the two calendars that were created by the committee, and then the third calendar that Dr. Hebert created at the board's suggestion, of really thinking about the needs and the feedback that we've received from all stakeholders and really making something that would be different. It's going to be great to see when they're sharing what contributed most, to find out what was really driving those decisions on the calendars. So all of the calendars do have early dismissal days, some for professional learning, some of those are workdays, or it could be end of the semester. When you're looking at the parent conference day, this is one thing that is different across the calendars. Calendar one and calendar three have early dismissal. Calendar two has a full day. So looking at the three calendars, they try to have 90 days in the first semester. Ultimately, we kind of settled on 88 being the number of days that we could have and still meet our instructional hours, so that gave each calendar the availability to have two days to kind of play with. So you'll see on calendar two, one of those being that full day for the parent conference day, because we know especially in elementary, that is something that they've asked for. In our other calendars, you'll see when we get to Christmas break, so in calendar one, that Christmas break is starting on December 21st. So we do have Christmas break starting there. They kind of use their days in a different way. On calendar one, one of the other things that is widely suggested is that we don't start school on a Monday for students. Calendar one does start on a Wednesday, so they have their days kind of spread out differently. Looking at calendar two, since we do have that full day for conference day, there's also, if you look down at additional days off, a full day for a fall break. So having those two days kind of built in is where they use their time, because again, this is feedback that we received. Our staff likes to have that fall break, and they really like that full day for the conference. So they did have to kind of go a little closer to Christmas on calendar two to use those two days. But if you're looking at Thanksgiving, they do have the full week for Thanksgiving, so that's one of the major differences across the calendars. Calendar one, Thanksgiving break is Wednesday through Friday. Calendar two and calendar three, you have the longer Thanksgiving break, you have the full week. Spring break is another one that, looking at all three calendars, calendar one and calendar three, spring break aligns with the fair. Calendar two, it does not align with the fair, however, we do have that fair day, that Friday off. It's Good Friday as well, so it's kind of a holiday, double holiday in itself there. And looking at the additional days off, in calendar one, you have the Friday of April 16th, which is just a student-staff holiday, just a break that they kind of work in, they know that leading up to testing sometimes, you need a little bit of break between spring break and testing. Calendar two, you have the fall break, and then the other dates that are in there, President's Day, across the three calendars, and the Good Fair, Good Friday Fair Day. Now, calendar three, when we're looking at the things that are built in, that one is really going to focus on providing days that we make sure that we have our schools covered. We know that Thanksgiving break, if we don't have that full week, or if we go very close to Christmas, we could have a staff shortage, and trying to make sure that you have subs, or making sure that students are coming to school and not having to make up exams. So that calendar three really focused on having those holidays and having the most days there that they could maximize. So those are kind of the. So, those are kind of the highlights of the calendars, and they are very different, and they really took all the feedback when they were creating them.
I think you guys did a great job with calendar three. Dr. Hebert, I know that was a lot of work for you all, and, and you wanted to also honor the other work that had been done on calendars one and two, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, and then we just need to remind everybody to answer this survey and vote, and we're very interested in the parents giving us that their vote isn't going to count towards the one that's going to be selected, but we're very, very interested in what their, their wishes and their, their outlooks are, so.
When did you say the parent survey was going to be opened, and for how long will that go?
October 27th, it runs, I can't remember the exact days that it runs, but it's about two to three weeks that they'll have, and then our schools will have their results December into January, and hopefully they'll be sharing those at their SAC meetings coming in the new year.
Right. Well, there will be a meeting of the SAC vote on the calendar as well, correct? So, they'll have that timeframe, and I know this board has been very interested in the SAC votes and the discussions they have there. I also wanted to mention that we have a student here, Owen Steele, from Lucanto High School, is here, working on his Eagle Scout project, and he was tasked with identifying an issue at a public meeting that may have different opinions. And so, when they reached out to me, I said, hey, this would be a great thing for you to sit in on, because we're going to have a lot of different opinions on this school calendar, and, you know, and some options here. So, I, I just want to recognize Owen, and I appreciate the work that you're doing on your Eagle Scout project. Do you want to come up to the mic?
No. (APPLAUSE). Ms. Ken, I, I know we spoke about this at the last meeting, and at that point, we had two calendars, and it would have been very easy, because I know there's some concerns from these board members as to the other two calendars, and it would have been very easy to step down in and change those, and I just commend everybody from, you know, just honoring the work of the, of the committee and keeping those two calendars and just coming up with the third, so I appreciate that.
Yep. It's whatever the teachers need, okay?
With that move approval of the calendar options for 2026-2027 calendars for the Citrus County Schools.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Farady, to approve the three calendar options for the 26th school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, community relations and strategic analysis, Mr. Bittner?
Would you like me to start? It's going to take more than four minutes. I can start if you'd like.
Yeah, and Ms. Couts, I know the city manager from the city of Emerys is here that was asked, we asked him to come on this one issue, so...
Our 515 is not really, as long as we're...
I'm fine with whoever you'd like.
Yeah, can, because you, could you do it? Yeah.
I'll begin, thank you.
Begin.
Good afternoon, school board members, Superintendent Hebert, Deputy Superintendent Greco, and Mr. Caporici. Later this month, Superintendent Hebert and Chairman Couts will be speaking at the legislative delegation. Superintendent Hebert has prepared remarks thanking both Representative J.J. Groh and former Senator Blaise Ngolia, although he will not be there, for their help with our legislative requests last year, all of which were approved. These four requests were as follows: money to expand the Academy of Health Careers at Crystal River High School; two, hurricane and coastal mitigation; three, money for the initial planning of a public safety training annex that includes a gun range; and four, building safety enhancements for the Academy of Environmental Science. This current legislative session, the school district is not making any requests. However, both the city of Inverness and the Board of County Commission has asked for letters of support for their individual legislative requests. The first request for a letter of support is from the city of Inverness, that relates to enhancements at Whispering Pines Park. To summarize the letter for the benefit of the audience, the city of Inverness wants to develop an RV campground, replace boundary fences, and construct a West Inverness Trail Connector. The city of Inverness does have additional requests for their legislative delegation, but they are only asking for a letter to support the three items I just mentioned. With that said, I ask for the board's guidance and then vote on how to proceed. Joining me today is Mr. Eric Williams, the Inverness City Manager, to answer any questions the board may have.
I invited all these people in red to help support that. There's one thing I learned from Ken Frink in politics, you got to get everybody in the room to support you, right? Thank you for having me here today, and again, as we did last year, the city has been on a mission to help unify, bringing these governmental legislative asks together, not so much in technical support, but in a show of community support and moving them forward, because that, that is what gets the attention of people in Tallahassee. One of the things last year that we discussed was the access and needs along Highway 41 North as it dealt with the terminus of an old right-of-way of Railroad Street, as well as the alleviation of pressure on Turner Camp. Those things were able to move forward with the Department of Transportation, which were very much needed, and the city was able to work with you all to help bring about some changes to Turner Camp that really, I think, have had a great effect to school traffic and circulation. So, the list that's before you this evening largely comprises other elements besides the projects that Mr. Bittner mentioned, and those things are steeped in protection of home rule, the environment, transportation networks, and multimodal connectivity, along with infrastructure within our community. So, I'm here this evening, I can answer any questions you may have, maybe we can put some ideas out there, or more discourse for the Eagle Scout to, to write about. Either way, we'll be doing a positive resolve, so I'm here this evening and appreciate any support we can get.
Well, I think we're happy, and, and we have the letter of support for the, for the city to...
How does this benefit the school? I'm not seeing it.
Say that again?
I'm not seeing how it benefits our schools, other than putting an RV park, how is that...
Well, RV campground, to be clear, because there's a huge differential between those two things, and, and one of the big things is today, there is a campground within Whispering Pines that is used largely, mostly by youth-driven organizations. Other youth organizations that wish to participate in the parks with things like travel ball league, youth athletics and development, those, those places right now are not finding enough overnight stays and opportunities to bring an entire family, and this is a modern technique that's being used all over the nation and within the state of Florida, and investments on public lands to expand, not parks, but campgrounds. There's a huge difference in that experience. The familial environment, the environmental education piece, and the opportunity to amalgamate that within a woodland environment, right here in our city, within a stone's throw of the district office here, is, is really an awesome opportunity. However, I will tell you that it gets construed against what you see in the private equity and private development market, which are large resort campgrounds. This is something that will be 75 or so less spots, this is not a, a large development. You know, Whispering Pines is 300 acres, this is something that will occur on 10 or less of that, a very small amount, and the state recognizes this issue for a, a simple reason, they own Whispering Pines Park, and for the city to keep that park in, in use, which is something that all the students, all parents, and, and many people enjoy, financially, we have to find ways that revenue can be generated out of the park that doesn't just captivate additional taxes from, from our local residents. So, in that sense, that, that is a tertiary benefit to the schools.
And Mr. Williams, I just heard the lady that's the head of Yaya's that takes care of our McKinney Vento students that are...
Yes.
...unsupervised teenagers with, with no homes, and they do appreciate campsites, so there's a big benefit to our kids.
Yeah, but Mr. Farid, I, I had that same question, but I, I came to a conclusion really quick, and, you know, I send Mr. Williams' role as a city manager over in Crystal River, and he, he's got, he's got a task here that I, I was fortunate not, not, not to have. He's a very small city running what amounts to a regional park, and all of our kids benefit from that park, so I would recommend that this, this, if there's a, if it's going to benefit this community, it's going to benefit our kids, and we would stand behind the city of Emerys. You, as, as anybody else knows, when we go to Tallahassee, the strongest thing we hear is the community as a whole is up there in support of projects, so I would recommend we, we honor this request.
And I would just have to say too, having spent time in the park, actually camping there with Cub Scouts, which is a great opportunity to be in this community...
There too.
I'm sorry?
We had swim meets there too.
Well, that's, and that's what I was just going to say, Ms. Couts, is that this, you know, we have three very strategic competition pools and practices, and if it were not for Whispering Pines, our Citrus High School swim team would struggle in a different way, and this truly provides that you have been partners with us, with our students, whether it's softball fields, baseball fields, youth athletics, we appreciate that, and I think this is, fits into that overall support of that Whispering Pines Park, which, Ken, you did a great job, because bicentennial people forget, which is on the Crystal Riverside, is owned and operated by the county. And in this case, you've partnered with multiple agencies, we're grateful to it because it benefits our students.
Yes, and the county is a good partner to us in this, and that, that has been years in the making, and it, the park is, is something that's been in our community for many decades, and it's approaching a time where many capital improvements are going to be needed, and something that generates revenue will, will put a bondable stream in place to allow us to bring back that level of expectation for generations to come. We are working currently with the state to execute another 50-year agreement, they have, they have cued that as something that they wish to have happen. Part of that agreement embodies a management plan that embraces these elements.
So, appreciate you coming today to the meeting, too, and, you know, we, we want to have a good relationship with the city of Emerys, and we appreciate the support that you give to us. You know, that traffic light at 41 and Middle School Road, we've looked at that, we've, I've talked to you about that, and we've talked about it in the community meetings, and the need for this multimodal trail that's going to be coming in from rails to trails, and if I understand correctly, that is the trail that's going to come right by Middle School Road on ours, on the middle school side of the overpass, correct?
So, the, the Department of Transportation, with all of these expansions, look to create multimodal pathways, be it sidewalks or wide walks, which is what that multi-use path is there, and, and there is a need to focus energies and discussion with the Department of Transportation, which the city is doing, to effectuate the, the idea of a crosswalk there, because it's currently unsignaled, and that path will be expanded when they widen the highway beyond the bridge.
And, you know, with kids leaving the middle school to go to Whispering Pine Park now, with an entrance there, you know, we're going to need a safe crossing there, and I know that when we talked on, with the DOT Commissioner, it came to one of the chamber meetings, I believe it was, he, he talked about a cross, a school crossing there...
Yes.
...could help speed that fulfillment of the light at Middle School Road and 41, so, you know, I'm, and I know a lot of that was already done in last year's legislative requests, though, right, Mr. Williams?
It is, and part of what's in this document are things that include that, it includes our focus to 41 North and the continued expansion of that, but at the same time, you know, we, we maintain a conversation and a line of cooperation with the Department of Transportation. I believe as they go into this second phase, there's going to be some opportunities to accomplish those things, but it's going to take a unified whole to make, make that happen.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, to approve the letter that I've already signed.
Well, you probably shouldn't have...
I make, I make a motion that we send forth a letter supporting the city of Emerys' legislative request.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Frink, and a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the letter of support for the city of Inverness at the upcoming legislative discussion, I think October 30th...
31st.
31st.
Halloween.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing us to be here, and, and we, we appreciate the partnership. If we can ever be of help, please, please reach out.
We'll ask.
Thank you.
Help us get that light.
Yeah, some might, one might have to lay down in traffic out there, but we'll, we'll see on that. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
The second request for letter of support is from the Board of County Commission. Over the past several months, the Citrus County Fire and Rescue, the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, the Citrus County School District, and members of Public Works from county government have met to discuss a possible regional training center that would serve as a centralized hub for advanced, multidisciplinary training across all public safety sectors. Mr. Dixon from the school district has been at the forefront of those conversations. We were also fortunate to have Mr. Dodd attend the last meeting with these four agencies. This regional training facility would align with Citrus County's strategic goals for enhancing public safety, strengthening regional partnerships, and investing in resilient, future-ready infrastructure. I ask again for the board's guidance and then vote on how to proceed on this request.
You know, I, I'm, there's something that when I see the letter, and I, I saw the part of a regional public safety training center, and Mr. Farady and Mr. Dodd can, can attest to this, that was, that was Phil Royal's dream. That was very important to him, to recognize the importance of that, and bringing all those agencies together, and so I'm, I'm excited to support this letter, and I am very hopeful that Phil's vision of this is what forthcoming.
Is that a form of a motion?
I, I would be more than honored to say, to support the upcoming legislative delegation letter in support of the Board of County Commission Regional Training Facility.
And I will be more than happy to second that.
I figured that. I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, and a second by Mr. Farady, to approve the letter of support for the Board of County Commissioners for the regional training facility for all of our emergency responders. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have love, one, thank you, Mr. Bittner, very much. We have one last added for good cause, to approve the First Amendment to the Agreement between the School Board and the Zoom Communications, Inc.
And I'd like to ask for approval for that, board members. This was an item that I added for good cause, I've been working with food service, so I'd like to ask for approval for the First Amendment to the Agreement between the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, and Zoom Communications for Online Educational Services, and this again will be used for the next year with some of our food services staff.
I'll make a motion to approve that for the, this is the First Amendment one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, First Amendment to Agreement between the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, and Zoom Communications Incorporated for the Online Educational Services.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Mr. Frink, to approve the First Amendment to Agreement between the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, and Zoom Communications, Inc., for Online Educational Services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Attorney Legal Matters?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, we're open now for public comments, and I do have some green cards, and we read this declaration before every citizen's comment, so each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities or vagaries, and refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, tend to incite violence or breach of place, peace. We ask that you model the following character traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take official action on any presentation. Any persons present who wish to speak must fill out a green card, and I have several, which are located in the back of the room. The chair calls for the first speaker, and the first speaker that I have a card for, and I've asked because we, we anticipate a lot of this, our board attorney is going to kind of watch that little thing to get you three minutes, okay? Victoria Smith, first?
Sure. Good mor, uh, good evening, members of the board, Victoria Smith, Citrus High School teacher. This bargaining season has been anything but typical, with the state slow to finalize its budget and staffing changes within the district, economic discussions were understandably delayed. CCEA recognized this and did not pressure the district to begin these talks prematurely. We waited in good faith. The first time we heard about the required, requirements tied to the TSIA funds, that's the Teacher Salary Increase allocation, was September 8th, just two seasons, two sessions before October 1st deadline. The district's first proposal came on September 22nd, barely a week before the cutoff, and during our final scheduled meeting before that date. CCEA affirmed that the proposal for teachers was workable, if accompanied by additional funds, but we are a union of more than just teachers, we represent support staff too, and they were left out. We asked for a modest paid holiday for a non-year-round support staff, something that could cost a fraction of the TSIA allocation, and bring them to just two paid holidays a year. That's still fewer than teachers, administrations, and even other support staff in the surrounding districts. When the district said that they needed time, CCEA proposed a virtual session on September 22nd. When the district said that they needed time, CCEA proposed a virtual session on September 25th. At that meeting, the district encountered with an increase in insurance board match for all staff, using the funds we had requested for the paid holiday. While well-intended, this moved, this move asked our lowest-paid employees to give a meaningful improvement to their working conditions so others could benefit. That missed the point entirely. And while a board match increase may help those with single medical plans, it does little for employees with family coverage. With such a small increase, many of them would actually see their take-home pay go down. That's not progress, that's a step backwards. After the deadline passed, we moved into comprehensive economic bargaining. CCEA presented a proposal that honored the district's original TSA, TSIA allocation, but the district countered offered less than 1% increase, hardly an increase at all. CCEA left that meeting, hopefully we believed in the process. The word impasse was never spoken at the table or off camera. So when the district declared impasse a week ago, our members were blindsided. We had bargained good faith every step of the way, as we have for 50 years. We are still ready to bargain, and let us not forget, the bargaining team is made up of volunteers, teachers and support staff, who give up their evenings to do this work. We remain committed to fairness, and we believe our staff deserve to be seen, heard, and valued, not sacrificed. Thank you very much.
The next green card I have is April Renfro.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is April Renfro, and I proudly serve as a member of our district's support staff. I love my job, and I love being a part of the team that helps our schools run smoothly every single day. My children have been in the Citrus County school system for the past decade, and I, myself, graduated from Citrus High School in 1997. I am deeply invested, both as an employee and as a parent, in the success of our schools. Support staff are the quiet backbone of this district. We're the ones who keep things running, making sure classrooms are ready, students are fed, buses are safe, and teachers have the help they need to focus on teaching. Without us, the small, everyday things that make our schools welcoming and functional simply wouldn't happen. But lately, it's become harder and harder to keep doing what I love. The increases in health insurance costs has hit my family especially hard. My husband is disabled, and we depend on my income to keep food on the table and our household stable. With rising premiums and no increase in pay to offset them, I'm going to find it hard to make ends meet, even while working full-time in the service of this district. I don't ask for luxury or special treatment, I'm simply asking for fairness, for recognition of the work support staff do, and for compensation that reflects our value to the school system. We're here because we care about the students, the schools, and the community, but care alone doesn't pay the bills. I truly believe we can find a way to balance fiscal responsibility with compassion for the people who keep this district running. I want to keep doing the job I love, serving our schools, supporting our teachers, and helping our students succeed. I just hope that the district can also support me and others like me in return. Thank you for your time, for listening with your hearts as well as your minds.
And the next green card is Breann Barton.
My name is Breann Barton, and I am a proud educator and union member in this district. I am also a proud graduate of this school system. This district isn't just where I work, it's home, it's where my roots are, and it's why I care so deeply about the decisions being made here. That's what makes the district's recent actions so disappointing. Declaring impasse and giving only 30 minutes notice before the meeting is not the way to treat the people who dedicate their lives to our students and our community. That is not transparency, and that is not collaboration. We've been told we were given multiple chances to approve the TSIA, but the truth is, we were only made aware of it in three meetings in two weeks. Three discussions is not meaningful negotiation. And now, because we refuse to accept the proposal, that leaves educators worse off financially, we've been pushed into impasse. Let's be clear about what's on the table. The proposed salary increase is about 500 a year. On top of that, the district is proposing to raise our monthly healthcare contribution by another $20. Meanwhile, our insurance costs are going up $866 a year. That math doesn't add up to a raise, it adds up to a pay cut. With this proposal, I will actually take home less money than I did last year. Our educators are already facing increasing workloads, rising costs, and higher expectations. To now tell them they should accept a deal that effectively lowers their pay is both unfair and unsustainable. It sends a message that the people who build the foundation of this community, our teachers, our support staff, and our school employees, don't matter. We're not asking for luxuries, we are asking for respect, for honesty, and for fair pay that reflects both the cost of living and the value of our work. I love this district, it made me who I am. It shaped my family and my future. That's why I'm standing here tonight, because I want to see it live up to the values it taught me: fairness, community, and doing what's right. Thank you.
Kristen, remain standing, you're next. Kristen Hollingsworth.
Hi, I'm Kristen Hollingsworth, I'm a teacher at Citrus High School. Good afternoon, I am here today to speak out against not only the impasse that the district has put forth, but also about the need for fair and equitable pay and treatment for all. There is no district without teachers and without support. There are no schools without teachers and without support. The idea of teachers and staff being treated as though we are expendable and easily replaceable needs to go. The fact is, there is no one beating down the doors for our jobs anymore. The reasons for that are numerous, and some of which are simply out of our control. However, when it comes to things like respect, equality, pay, and benefits, those are things you most certainly can. Now, when we get into this field, we know that we will never be rich and famous. My mother was a teacher in this district for over 30 years, so I was always well-aware of the drawbacks of the profession. As a matter of fact, she used to tell me that when I die, my position will be posted before my obituary. Even knowing all of this, I still chose to become a teacher because I love the job. However, I can't pay my bills and provide for my family with love. The simple fact is that this extreme insurance increase will cause many of our already-struggling staff to have to make a choice between providing for their family the basic, everyday necessities or providing health insurance, because providing both is simply no longer feasible. For some, it never was feasible, so that is why they already do not have coverage. Like so many of my colleagues in our school, I must work a second job to cover basic needs. I know some that even work a third job. As an employer, I would be ashamed to know that I have staff that must consistently rely on food banks and the generosity of others to help support their family's resources. That is the unfortunate reality for many of your employees, particularly your lowest-paid employees. We are not asking for anything out of the ordinary or anything unreasonable, we are simply asking that our pay keeps up with the increased costs of insurance and living expenses. We are asking that our support staff, the very backbone of our schools, the silent and often unseen heroes that keep the school running behind the scenes, are properly compensated to match or exceed their counterparts in surrounding districts, and that they are treated like professionals with dignity and respect. Therefore, I urge you to please keep your employees in mind when you make your decisions. The good of the employee is also the good of the student. Our staff and students deserve solutions that reflect both fairness and mutual respect. Let's work collaboratively to find a path forward that honors the dedication and hard work of every employee in this district. Thank you.
Next is Christian Garry.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Hebert, Ms. Greco. You all know I'm no stranger to these meetings, and I'm no stranger to speaking at them, but thankfully, I find myself in more robust company tonight, and I appreciate that. I want to use my time tonight to put things in context. There are a lot of people who are going to speak on the issue at hand, I'll let them do that, I think they're doing a great job. The employees you see here today are ones that I hope you're grateful for. I want you to look out, if you have the time, if you have the notion, to see these red-clad educators in front of you and know that these are the ones that you should be the most grateful to have. Some of them have things to say that are uncomfortable to hear, some of them are going to express frustrations that you'll struggle in finding solutions to, but every single one of them are here because they believe in you, board members. For every educator you see here this evening, there's at least one despairing. They're sitting at home, they believe that their voice will never be heard. For every educator you see here, there's at least one who stayed away because they had too much fear of retaliation to bring themselves here. For every educator here, there's at least one who's thrown up their hands, given up, and started to silently look for a new career. These educators are here because they're upset, that is true, but to express themselves in respectful hope of being heard. We love our jobs, we love this district, we love our students, and we want to see our professions treated the way they deserve to be, with respect and with dignity. So when you're hearing the uncomfortable facts, the frustrated comments, and the personal stories that may hit a little too deep, remember that these are brought to you because we have faith in this district, and we have faith in you, board members. Thank you very much for your time.
The next green card I have is from Michael Breeder.
Good evening, my name is Michael Breeder, and I'm a PE teacher at THE Pleasant Grove Elementary. I'm also a proud site leader of our Shooting Star Members of CCEA. I want to hit the pause button for just a few seconds. I want to say thank you to everyone who took time away from their lives to be here tonight. You are here because you care about our community schools, so huge respect to all of you here up front, and the audience, even those watching at home on the YouTube link. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone who comes to the collaborative bargaining meetings to negotiate for a better workplace. That includes Christian Gallery, President of CCEA, and one of my former students when I started working here over 25 years ago. We're very lucky he has come back to serve the community that he hatched in. Repeat after me: collaborative bargaining. Everyone involved has sacrificed so many hours of many workdays and evenings to improve the heart of our community, which is all of our schools, where we help young humans be the best people they can be. CCEA always brings suggestions to the table to improve our schools, and we have an amazing school district. The district leadership and CCEA bargaining team brings the brightest minds together to do the math and make our school system a place where everyone wants to work. This is where we spend the majority of our life force of each 24 hours. Don't give up on us. We want to shake hands on an economics package that provides respect and dignity to both our support and instructional units. You can do it. We're here because we never give up. As a PE teacher, I tell my students every day, don't give up, keep going, you're getting stronger, you're getting those muscles, you're getting faster. Please don't give up on our workforce. Encourage our district leaders to come back to the table in good faith and improve their deal beyond the TSIA dollars, a deal that respects the professionals who make our schools work. Dr. Hebert, you were State Teacher of the Year when I was coming into the scene here, and have always been a positive male role model to me and my career. Urge your district bargaining team to be creative and find an equitable economics package for teachers and support. You of all people know how it takes a village to support a classroom, and now more than ever, the whole school system. We believe collaboration is still possible, and we hope you'll help restore it. Thank you for your time.
The next green card I have is for Becky Schaefer.
Good evening, board staff, my name is Becky Schaefer, and I am a paraprofessional. Paraprofessionals are the backbone of our education system. They work alongside teachers every day, providing vital support to students with diverse needs, maintaining order, and ensuring no child is left behind. Despite their importance, paraprofessionals are often underpaid, underappreciated, and overworked. They deserve better specifically fair raises, paid holidays, and more respect in the workplace. This injustice is compounded with small raises, when small raises are instantly negated by raising medical costs. This must be addressed if schools truly value the essential roles paraprofessionals play. Paraprofessionals deserve higher pay that reflects their crucial contribution. Many earn wages barely above poverty level, even though their responsibilities are demanding. They manage behavioral challenges, assist students with disabilities, and often perform duties similar to certified teachers, yet they earn only a fraction of the teacher's pay. Fair compensation would not only acknowledge their effort, but would also improve retention, boost morale, and create a more stable learning environment for students. A raise is not a luxury, it's a necessity for those who dedicate their lives to helping children learn and thrive. In addition to fair pay, paraprofessionals deserve paid holidays. Many school employees, including teachers and administrators, enjoy paid time off during breaks, but paraprofessionals often do not. This is unfair and sends a message that their time and well-being are less valuable. Paid holidays would allow paraprofessionals to rest and recharge without financial worry. It would also bring a sense of equity and respect among all staff, reinforcing that paraprofessionals are essential members of the educational team, not easily replaceable support workers. Equally concerning is the issue of rising medical insurance costs. In many districts, health insurance premiums have increased so much that any small raise a paraprofessional receives is completely erased. This is not progress, it's a punishment disguised as an award. A raise should improve quality of life, not simply offset rising healthcare costs. When paraprofessionals see their paychecks stay the same or even decrease, it significantly damages morale. No employee should have to choose between financial stability and healthcare coverage, especially those dedicated to the public education. The way paraprofessionals are treated reflects how society values the students that they serve. When they are overworked, underpaid, and disrespected, it impacts the entire system. Students move out, lose out when skilled educational, skilled paraprofessionals leave for better-paying jobs. Teachers struggle without the necessity of support. Investing in a paraprofessional is just not the right thing to do, it's a direct investment in students' success. School districts and policymakers must act to ensure that we are treated with the dignity, fairness, and appreciation that we have long earned. Our students deserve the best, and that means supporting the support staff who support them every day. Thank you.
The next green card I have is from Beth Abramovich. Did I, did I just slaughter that last name?
Abramovich.
Abramovich.
Good evening, I am Beth Abramovich. I'm a computer teacher at Citrus Springs Middle School, go Falcons, and as the CCEA site rep, I hear a lot of stories, so that's what I decided tonight that I wanted to come to share a couple of those with you. One of them, we have a phenomenal math teacher who's been in our school for a couple of years. He came in and completely revamped our intensive math classes. He spoke up for students and demanded better than what they were getting. He clearly loves kids and teaching, but he is struggling with supporting his family. He can't afford the insurance for his kids. He coaches as many sports as he can to not only build up our students and spend time with them, but to also make extra money. He's afraid that working as a teacher in Citrus County is simply not sustainable. We have an ELA teacher who gives her heart and soul to her students. She's a widow working three jobs to make ends meet. She still volunteers at school events and enjoys seeing her students at the YMCA. She comes to work with a smile on her face every day and a positive attitude, but I have to tell you, today, she met with her insurance rep to help her sign up, and she was in tears over what she found out today. Finally, we have an amazing behavior specialist. She's a single mother with a master's degree who also isn't making enough to afford to have her children on the insurance. Her behavior interventions are such an important part of the success at CSMS that she's frustrated with not feeling appreciated or fairly compensated as a professional. These three teachers were all nominated for Teacher of the Year just a few weeks ago. They are incredible human beings, giving 100% to their students every day. They deserve more. Teachers need more than just respect and applause. We have to be able to pay the bills and take care of our families, and I'm really concerned about losing people like this from our district. So I just wanted to bring those, those three really important teachers to your attention. Thank you very much.
The next green card I have is from Rachel Miller.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Rachel Miller, teacher at THE Cristover High School. First off, I just want to say how much I appreciate so many of you. I'm very, very fortunate to have attended the Citrus County Schools, graduating LaCanto High School in 2000, and teaching in several of the schools throughout Citrus County for the last 21 years. I'm also very grateful for the great relationships with several of the board members that I have here today, as well as Dr. Hebert. I also know that much of what's happening isn't coming directly from Dr. Hebert or from any of you. I know a lot of this stems from Tallahassee and the way education funding is structured in Florida, which is why several of us spend lots of time going to talk to our local legislators, as well as going to Tallahassee to speak. But the reality is, Florida teachers rank 50th in the nation in teacher pay. And with the increase in the cost of living and the rise in insurance premiums, what's being proposed right now would still result in a pay cut for many of us. Teachers across Citrus County are already working two or even three jobs just to make ends meet. Some are even looking for positions in surrounding counties where they can earn more for the same work in much smaller class sizes. That should never have to happen. This isn't about greed, it's about survival and respect. Our teachers deserve to be able to live in the community they serve, to afford healthcare, and to dedicate themselves fully to their students without constant financial stress. A fair and meaningful raise is not just about supporting teachers, it's about investing in the quality of education our children receive. When teachers are valued, they stay. When they're not, they leave. And our students are the ones who ultimately pay that price. We have an amazing district, and I'd love to see us form a committee that allows us to help showcase Citrus County so that everyone wants to move here and teach our amazing kids. So tonight, I'm asking to stand with your educators and paraprofessionals to make Citrus County a place that teachers can afford to stay, grow, and continue giving to the best of the next, giving their best to the next generation. Let's come to the table with a fair and equitable offer for all staff. Thank you.
Too much, Rachel. My next green card is from Sue Roberts.
Good evening, Dr. Hebert, Ms. Greco, and the board, everybody in the room. I stand before you today a teacher with 38 years of experience in the classroom. I've seen a lot of changes in these almost four decades. But one thing that's constant, and it's been gnawing at me this year, is frankly something I never thought I would be addressing this late in my career, and that is the question of compensation, more specifically the lack of. You see, when I started teaching almost four decades ago, we were told that teaching was a noble profession, that we were shaping the future, molding young minds, making a difference in the world. But somewhere along the way, the conversation about teachers' pay got lost in a shuffle of budgets, politics, and maybe short-sighted decision-making. This year, as I looked at the proposal raise, if you can call it that, I was quite offended. It's been the lowest I've ever seen in 38 years. In fact, when you adjust for inflation and our increased health insurance, it's a pay cut. When you think about it, it's just like a slap in the face, like an attack on all of our dignity. While groceries are going higher and the cost of gas, rent, medical bills, and everyday expenses keep rising, a raise of less than 1% doesn't even come close to keeping the pace of inflation. Imagine being a teacher, someone who's dedicated their life to a classroom, someone who spends hours each week preparing lessons, grading papers, meeting with parents, attending professional development, all while managing a classroom full of diverse students with unique needs and behaviors. It's exhausting. We are often the first line of defense for kids dealing with trauma, mental health, struggles, or even everyday life stresses to become growing up today. Despite all that, the financial recognition just doesn't match our efforts. We take time out of our evenings, weekends, and we create a safe, supportive, and engaging environment for the students of Citrus County. But when we get a raise that barely covers a tank of gas or a week's worth of groceries, it makes you wonder, are we really valued? Think about that. Talking with my colleagues, their frustration is quite palpable. They are burnt out. They are stretched thin. Many are leaving their profession. And quite frankly, who can blame them? Teachers are doing more with less. A raise like this is not going to bring people to the profession. It's not going to attract talent that we need for our students to get their best education. And really, it's not going to keep experienced teachers like myself teaching another year, even though I am in the drop program. How does this proposal make me feel? I feel disrespected. I feel that the work that we do, often thankless, always demanding, doesn't matter. I feel that despite our best efforts, we are seen, I've heard this before, expendable.
Thank you, ma'am. That is three minutes.
Oh, okay. Then I just thank you. And the district needs to do better.
Our next green card is from Karen DeChamps. She told me I'm on my sack meetings.
I put on my glasses. Karen DeChamps, Forest Ridge Elementary. I'm going to speak tonight about the proposed pay raise. I've realized today, as I did my health insurance, that yes, I will in fact be taking a $48 pay cut. I want that to sink in. I'm being asked to accept an agreement that leaves me in a deficit, to do the same work or more work for less pay. That's not sustainable. That's not respectful. That's not the way we build a future that honors education. That is an insult. Let's be honest, there's no more budgets at our homes to balance. There are no more corners to cut. We've done without. We've sacrificed personally. We've done this to do what we love, teaching. The financial strain is no longer just uncomfortable. It's unsustainable. I have spoke with many of my colleagues this past week. They are working, doing tutoring, waitressing, working retail. They're exhausted. They're seriously considering leaving Citrus County for neighboring counties or just leaving altogether. And I cannot blame them. They're giving their best, and they're unable to give what they want when they're exhausted, overworked, and underpaid. Everyday teachers in this district give everything we have, our time, our energy, and our hearts, to make sure our children are safe, valued, and capable of learning. This offer sends a painful message, that the people who shape the future of this community aren't worth a fair, livable wage. And that message hurts. Invest in your teachers, because when your teachers are respected and fairly compensated, your classrooms are stronger, your communities are stronger, and the future of Citrus County is brighter for us all. Thank you.
My next green card is Donald Whitaker.
I'm a little taller, so I'll have to lift this up. Afternoon, board. Dr. Hebert, Mr. Dodd, Mr. Kennedy. I speak on behalf of teachers in this classroom, being a current one myself in a neighboring county. And just seeing the pay proposal for the upcoming school year was nothing short of disappointing. As a former member of Citrus County Schools, both as a student, teacher, and now parent, this is one of easily the best districts to work in in the state. To see that a proposal of a 1.3% increase in pay compared to a 3%, you know, compared to 3% from what CCEA was asking, was disappointing to say the least, especially when you compare to the cost of inflation. Today, the buying power of a teacher making $51,000, which for many of us in the first 10 years of our profession are going to be making that, our buying power is that of $40,800. The average home we know in Citrus County has increased substantially since then. The cost of healthcare has increased at 11%. So by giving a 1.3% raise to the teachers is just purely unfair. Rising standards, declining compensation, as teacher compensation continues to erode in real terms, expectations placed upon teachers are rising substantially on top of teaching. Teachers are completing multiple jobs inside the classroom, not just their singular job. There used to be paras, more paras in classrooms with support. They disappeared and that job has fallen onto the teacher. Along with rising expectations year after year, the pay has stagnated. Citrus County Education Association is asking that no less than 3% pay raise be given to the teachers, and that is nothing short of fair. I ask that you guys can, you know, consider increasing their pay significantly more. Thank you.
My next green card is Katie Fritz.
Good evening, board. I do regret to inform you, I don't have anything prepared, but I do feel compelled to speak, so apologies if it's a little mismatched. As of right now, there are 20 open positions for our paraprofessionals that are open on district website right now as fast-track positions. They're not being filled. Their goalpost for success here in Citrus County continues to move forward, and yet the pay that we are seeing does not reflect that. New responsibilities, obligations, and responsibilities that we have over our students continue to increase year by year, and yet we are not compensated for this. As a matter of respect of our time and our ongoing issues that we have in our classrooms, we are facing more disrespect, we are facing more issues with our parents. Now, all of our parents are awful, but we have parents that will fight us and the discipline of their children. Again, not all. We do appreciate the parents that we have that are wonderful and supportive and continue to be supportive. But the reality is, that's not all of them. We continue to face issues with students, discipline issues, and other issues in our classrooms. We are having to make sure that they are at their highest level and increasing test scores. And yet, these responsibilities that we continue to have to adjust to new curriculums, changing standards, and others, it just doesn't match up. We are unable to do the work, or we are tired of having to do so much work, and yet we are not compensated accordingly. Teachers are tired. We are able to make more money doing other things with much less. I was pushed to a point recently where I personally went to look at district website to see other positions. I was tired where I was. I teach middle school. It was no shock that I was overwhelmed one day and wanted to look further. And realizing that there are still responsibilities in other positions in other schools, and they just didn't line up. So I started looking at WTC to look into radiology, because if it was boring, at least it would pay me accordingly. And I had to be talked off that ledge by my mother, who, bless her heart, just talked me off that ledge. But honestly, do I personally remove myself from what I love for the sake of my well-being, both mental, with the disrespect of students, and also financially, to allow myself to have a future that I can hold on to? Thank you for your time.
I have no further green cards, so any other business to come before the board? Dr. Hebert?
So first of all, I'd just like to thank everyone that's in the audience today for coming today. I appreciate you, one, coming in and speaking, speaking from the heart, being respectful in your thoughts. I do want to address just a couple of things. Just to make sure everybody understands, the teacher salary increase was one piece. And if you had seen the letter, I believe Ms. Greco sent a letter from Commissioner Kamustas, who said, "When this salary allocation came down, we had to make a decision by October 1st." And I believe that was sent to every staff member, correct, Ms. Greco? Yes. So we want to make sure that was done. That was one part of it. There is still additional work that needs to be done in bargaining, and I know our bargaining team is going to continue to do that work. There's a date set, I believe, for Thursday of this week and the following Monday. So I know, as your superintendent, I'm committed to continue to work with that bargaining team to make sure that we're going to move in that direction. We want to work creatively. We want to think about options that we can do to make sure that you are compensated for the work that you do. We do appreciate you coming. I appreciate all of your comments. I've taken notes of things that you've said, so when I speak to the bargaining team, before they come and meet, we can have those honest conversations. But I want to thank you again for coming and just making sure you understood that we are committed to that work. And we never did leave the table, just so you know. The impasse was only on that one piece. It was not on the rest of the information. It was just on that one, and that was because of what we had to be done based on statute. And Ms. Council, I would just recommend none of the board members comment on any of the bargaining, because they may preside over it in the future.
Everybody understand?
Well, I mean, I think we can make general comments.
Yes, your general comments. Say nice things about your sack committees and...
No, general comments about our employees and what we hope to see. I mean, I can make a general comment on that.
Okay.
I will tell you, I had reports on other issues non-related to the comments tonight having to do with artificial intelligence and some conversations I would love to share more of later. But I think that all of us have our minds somewhere else right now. I know mine is. For those of you who know, my children are great because of you guys. My wife is a 30-year teacher in this system. Many of them have worked, many of you have worked with them. And I'll leave it there tonight.
First and foremost, I appreciate all y'all coming. You know, it's all about the kids, but the only way we have successful kids is through you all. So, and I certainly, I don't want to say too much because we've been asked not to, but my hearts are with you all, and I really hope we can get to where we need to get.
Yeah, I appreciate all of y'all coming out today. I mean, I wish that I could comment more about the collective bargaining side, but I will follow the attorney's advice. I had some emails from some of you, which I appreciate you taking time to send those emails. I've responded briefly to some of them, but, you know, I do see the health insurance issue as a major issue. And we have to look at how we're going to address that. And we may have, you know, the last couple of years, there was such a small increase, which really hurt us this year, right? Because now we're seeing a huge increase. And we don't know what's going to happen next year. So we got to try to right the ship here with the health insurance. I know, I don't want any of you to have to take a pay cut. I'll tell you that. And so you know from my heart that I'm, you know, I want to see us use the money we have. And I hope you know too, that, you know, we don't have a money tree. We don't have a lot. It's coming from what we get from the state. And some of this with the TSIA, you know, it's just got to be for that purpose. So, yes, I'm interested in hearing more on the bargaining end. And I'm glad, I think you heard me say at the last meeting, you know, why are we waiting so long to have another meeting? Let's meet. And I challenge both sides. Let's get this thing, let's get out the gate in the summer. You know, if you all are willing to come in and negotiate, let's get started. Our budget starts July 1. And we have the state that's breathing on down our necks with wanting to get this money out in your paychecks by October 1. So let's work on that both together and start the process earlier, because it is something that I have always been, when I've sat in this seat, to say, oh, we've sat here before that we may not have raises by Christmas. You know, are you kidding me? I mean, let's get everything negotiated. Let's get money in your paychecks as soon as we can. So that's what my commitment is. Again, thank you guys for coming.
It's hard for me to sit here because I've worked with so many of you as your SRO. Some of you are my students. And we, you know I love you. It's just hard for me to sit here, and I want you to understand, there's not a lot that we could say or do. that we could say or do, and my heart is with all of you. Mr. Breeder, my grandson comes home loving you every day, and I appreciate what you do, and I've worked with so many of you, so I just want you to know that we are going to work hard.
And the reason I could tell Kristin not to sit down, because she was the next green card, is because I taught her in 7th grade. But I will tell you, I feel your pain, because I still remember, I think it was 1997, we took a pay cut, and it was because of insurance, and it's coming back to haunt us again. And so I understand exactly what you're saying, but I still remember working that next year for less than I had the year before. So it's just part of the world that we live in, and I guarantee you that we're going to do our best to try and make everything equitable for you, but it's just a pinch. But I appreciate all of you being here, and we just will try to work together to do what's best for you, because when we do what's best for our teachers in our classrooms, we do what's best for our kids. Any other business to come before the board?
It is 6:10, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys, for coming.